All right, the time is 6:00 PM on Monday, October 16th, 2023. At this time, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Maldonado? Councilmember Bucelado is not going to be here this evening. Councilmember Neal? I hear him, so we're going to say here. Councilmember Cordes? Councilmember Larson? Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
And Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we will open up our call to the public, and the call to the public is for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. The council rules limit public comment to three minutes, and individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed upon a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion in legal action. I have two here.
Thank you. Mayor, council staff, good evening. Let me put my eyes on. My name's Lester Curry. My wife owns the Loft and Pantry on Main, and I hope my two minutes of fame here will kind of, you know, have some consideration and not waste your time. I come before you this evening to draw attention to the parking issue on Main Street. As more businesses continue to come in and tourists flock to the town, the traffic and parking continue to enhance the problems and in turn, it's going to start deterring the business. It's a critical time, I believe, for this town to take positive, progressive steps for the future of Main Street and the town of Florence. I encourage the mayor and council, please take this issue serious enough to take immediate action and planning in implementing some out-of-the-box thinking. You know, this could include, you know, closing some existing arterial streets to make parking lots, parking complexes, closing Main Street completely, lighting, signing to existing parking structure to help people know what to do and where to go. It's something as simple as no employees or owners parking on Main Street during business hours. Meters, assigned spots. Whatever is decided, please, start soon. This can't be as simple as just asphalting an old Cocapelli lot. Please, I beg you to start this planning as soon as possible. Maybe addressing this issue will also call attention to maybe what we want to be when we grow up as a town. Thank you for your time. Look forward to hearing about your planning and implications in the future. Thank you.
Your timing is perfect, Mr. Curry, and yes, we will keep you apprised, and we will also include public and business owners as we have those discussions. Ms. Kathy Adam?
Kathy Adam, 240 East Ruggles, Florence. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight to advocate for the Pinnell County Historical Museum, and I'm referencing item 7B on your consent agenda, the chamber grant. My remarks should be taken as forward-thinking, not specific to the item, the chamber's request you have before you tonight. I understand this year's Downtown Events Assistance Grant Program was one of the most competitive ever with the number of applications and with the limited funding to meet everybody's requests. Just wanted to let the council know that these Ernest/Frank talks and Arizona Speaks programs from Arizona Humanities, these are programs that have been a core of the museum's program offerings for years. This is our bread and butter. Did you know that the town already offers these through the library? And what we did, because as more and more entities were offering the same type programming, we saw our audiences dwindling. So, we joined up with the town and successfully now promoted these for two years, and we just did one over in the Ruggles Room, Packed House, For the Love of Turquoise, was terrific. These are great programs. What I don't think you know maybe is that the way the grant opportunities or applications are written is the museum is not eligible to participate. So, what I'm here to do tonight is to ask you to have another look at the grant program. I did have a brief discussion with our new director, very good discussion, but we were in passing. And just to say, look at who's eligible, and I would like to ask the town to consider two avenues of returns. One, obviously, is to drive crowds to Main Street. I get it, but that's an entertainment, that's a Road to Country Thunder, that's a barbecue challenge. I'm asking you to think about the heritage, cultural, educational offerings that museums like we do. We cannot compete in terms of number of attendees. I wish it was true, people just don't get all that excited. So, if it's important to the town, is there a criteria you can look at that would allow us to somehow participate? And I would venture to say that us 501(c)(3)'s that focus on cultural heritage and the arts are the poorest applicants you're getting, so we desperately could use the help. And lastly, I'd like to invite everybody to our Dia de los Muertos, our third annual right here in Padilla Park, and we did get assistance from the town, thank you very much, because it is downtown. The limitation is Butte, so south of Butte, you can't play, which takes us out of the game. But anyway, this Saturday, 2 to 8, we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adam. And I have Courtney Ramirez online. I see a hand up.
Hi, good evening, council staff and residents. I wanted, I was looking at the agenda and see item 8D regarding our prior town manager's contract, but then on page 364 of the staff report, or whatever we're calling that, also mentions the next step and talks about how they'll be using a consulting firm to serve as our interim manager. So, I hope that when this item gets discussed tonight during the meeting that Lisa or whoever's going to be doing this presentation goes into depth about what our real next steps are with the town manager, and is this something we're going to look into full-time? Is it part-time? Are we really, are we going to look into a real full-time manager, or what? And, you know, the financials, I guess, that also has to do with that. And then, the item 8E on the agenda regarding the Florence Copper, the EPA, and the Escalante Ruins. I started reading that, but it's a lot of legal mumbo jumbo that I don't understand, so I would like the staff to explain when this gets up for discussion also. You know, I'm hoping that this agreement is going to do anything and everything to preserve the native ruins of this, of the Escalante Ruins in the ballpark. And I would just like, you know, some discussion about that, so the public's aware of what we're going to do to preserve that site. And that's all I had to, all I needed to discuss at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in person or online at this time? All right, seeing no further, we'll close the first call to the public and move on to our presentations. All right, can I have Ms. Jennifer Schaefer, please, come up? Let's give her a round of applause.
Ms. Jennifer Schaefer is one of the most amazing procurement specialists, and I've heard tremendous positive things from many employees in the town. This month, we are honoring and recognizing Mrs. Schaefer for her contributions to the town of Florence and her position. We do have a program where once a month, employees nominate one of their peers, they write why, and then there's a board that comes together, they review all of the submissions, and they make a selection. And this month, we're honored to have you with us this evening. Jennifer has worked for the town of Florence for almost 15 years in a few different departments and in different roles. Jennifer has always assisted others regardless of her regular duties. Jennifer recently became a finance team member as the procurement officer and has quickly become an asset to the department. She not only assists members of the finance department, but often also serves as a backup for other departments' administrative assistants when they are absent from work. Jennifer never turns another staff member away when they need assistance. She is willing to help them understand the process and procedures for how bills are to be paid, and Jennifer was most helpful when she assumed the responsibilities of accounts payable during this past year. We want to thank Jennifer for all of her hard work and dedication to the finance team, the town staff, and the citizens of the town of Florence. I'd like to say thank you. And Ms. Jimenez, would you like to come and say a few words as well?
It is very rare to find an employee such as Jennifer. I was extremely lucky that she came over to work with us. I always look at my staff, treat them like family, but for Jennifer, she is just one of the most helpful people in our department. She does not mind stepping in at any time to help anyone, and she's done wonders for the town itself and its procurement efforts. She also is extremely eager to learn the whole finance department itself, and to me, that is such an inspiration, because you don't find many people that are willing to do that. They're willing to do their job, but they're not willing to really research and want to go that extra effort, so I can say I'm very lucky. Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer, would you like to say?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I enjoy working for the town. Thank you.
And she has incredible taste if anybody visits her office. She's a phenomenal interior decorator.
Whereas the citizens of the town of Florence rely on the town to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas the cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver the town services such as fire, police, and emergency medical response to ensure safe communities. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, and recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs. And whereas it is important for the town of Florence to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in the community. And whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the town of Florence to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means. And whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the town can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Florence joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona, declaring October 15th to the 21st, Arizona Cities and Towns Week. I'd like all department heads to come on up here and join us, and we're going to take one step forward, and we're going to squeeze everybody in. Anybody that's in the room that would like to also join us, you're also welcome to come up, and we'll take one more step up.
You want me in the picture? Lisa, you want me to take it?
Bellboard mission members, would you mind sharing the stage with our class of please?
Anybody else want to come up? Everybody is truly welcome.
Cities and Towns Week, come on. It's going all over, let's get ready.
Let's try.
Let's try.
Yes.
You're all good, I like it.
Thank you.
All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Approval of the warrant to register of demands ending September 30th, 2023, any amount of Item B, award $2,500 from Downtown Events Assistant Program Fall Issuance to the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to assist with the fall farmers market and Ernest Ted Talks. Item C, approval of the Arizona Border Fencing and Technology Grant Agreement, M230045, with Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs for $1,118,649.60 to purchase police equipment. Item D is adoption of the nationwide joiner to put the town of Florence Public Safety Deferred Compensation 457 Plan, authorizing the acting town manager to execute all documents associated with establishing the plan. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our consent agenda. Is there any member of the public or our council that would like any item removed at this time? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, consent agenda is written.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item 8A, new business. Discussion, approval, disapproval. To award the bid for construction of improvements to equip Well 5 with new pumps and cellery equipment and a motor control center at Well 5, CIP WU-100, and enter into a contract with KENG Construction in the amount not to exceed $2,247,515. Mr. Chrisalis.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. A little bit of history on Well 5. Well 5 several years ago was taken offline due to its increasing levels in nitrates, which were approaching the actual threshold, the permit limit. So that was taken offline before we had any violations of our permit. For the last two and a half years, we've been working on drilling a new hole, outfitting the actual shaft, and then working on the design, completing the design for the actual well itself, the part that actually pulls the water out of the ground, supplies it to the storage tanks, and this is the culmination of that two and a half years' worth of work is now finishing off that. This went through a competitive bid process. KENG was the low-qualified bidder, and with that, are there any questions?
Council, do you have any questions or comments on this item? Seeing no such movement, we do need a motion.
Motion to approve item 8 offer.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is discussion, approval, disapproval, to award the bid for the construction of improvements for the Influent Pump Station Oder Control Project, known as CIP SU88 at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant, and enter into a contract with MGC Contractors in an amount not to exceed $9,203,970. Mr. Chrisalis.
So this project has had several names over the years and has taken a few different alternatives. Essentially, this is an improvement that will enclose the current headworks and will essentially reduce odor in that area. There's two parts to that. One, the visual, that area will no longer be able to be seen because it is within now essentially a building, if you will, and there's a strong correlation between what people see and what people smell. So the first part is that will assist in that. But that odor control will also pull a vacuum for thousands of feet within our system and reduce future maintenance of those manholes that do get, in the past, we've had contracts awarded by the council to do maintenance on certain manholes in the downtown area. This will also assist in that as well. As part of this project, there's also a redundancy for the first time. There will be two bar screens versus the one bar screen, so anytime we have a problem with that bar screen, we have to essentially man that 24 hours a day because we have to manually rake that area versus the bar screen. So whenever there's an issue with something getting damaged or getting jammed up, so this will, this will provide us some additional redundancy in that area. With that, are there any questions?
Are there any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda, item A Bravo.
It's not consent agenda.
Oh, agenda item A Bravo.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Item 8C is discussion, approval, disapproval, to request to change the scope of work for the WIFA Drinking Water Loan, 920316-21, removing the WU-74 Five Parks Water Transmission Line Project and adding funds to the WU-66 Adamsville Road Water Line Project. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, this project is asking to remove the funding that was allocated to WU-74, which is the Five Parks Water Transmission Line. This project was chosen, was determined that it was cost prohibitive and we need to reallocate the funding to a project that's ready to go. Our WU-66, which is the Adamsville Water Line Project, increased budget from $1.875 million to $7 million. So, in determining this, we felt it was, this project is ready to go, so our best allocation would be to move the funding over to this until the WU-74 can be researched and try to be pushed off into future years. Before going to WIFA, we have to have council approval for this, and then I'll go to the WIFA Board for determination.
Are there any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? Councilmember?
Why is the, if the WU, say that five times, was, 74 was slated as a project, why is it not ready? What seems to be the delay and why it's not ready since we put it on our list of things to do?
It's not that it's not ready. The project did go through a full project assessment, and the improvements would be astronomical in comparison to the small benefit of a few homes within a certain area. So- There's a north area and a south area that are separated, and each one of them, one works off of gravity and one works off of booster pumps. So we have a small area at the very high end of the lower pressure area that has some marginal pressures. And when I say marginal, they're, they are way above what the state requires us to have. But occasionally, there are low pressures in there. So that project would only essentially serve those few and be millions of dollars for the rest of that project. And it was deemed it was not cost effective for that little bit of an increase.
Okay. And so then you're working on a solution, though, that would be less costs, that would cost us less money to address the issue over there, or what are we gonna do?
There is no other cost effective approach. The whole system would have to be redone as what was in that study. And like I said, it's for very few homes that have that, that issue.
So are we going to wait to see if growth happens over there? I guess I'm trying to understand if it's something, because what I find is that we put off projects because right this second, it's not cost effective, but in five years, when all of a sudden an area has boomed up, now all of a sudden we're scrambling to fix a problem that we already know about. And i.e. the roads. You and I go back and forth about the roads, and the, the traffic studies don't justify the, the expansion, and I keep saying, can we be ahead of the eight ball instead of behind the eight ball? This, I don't even want to be off the pool table I feel like we're off of. So can, I'm just trying to make sure that this is something that later is not going to come back, and then we're scrambling to fix a problem if, if we are aware of it. How can we look at other alternatives to address the issue? Or is it gonna just be something that we no longer worry about?
The area to the north where there would be development that would occur would be in that higher pressure zone. And so development, there should not be any additional problems, but they will do their own studies to verify there's enough pumping capacity in that area, and they will supplement that if necessary as part of their design studies. So I do not believe that there is a forthcoming wave of development in that area. There's also the area to the west that would be either part of Heritage Farms or Anthem Merrill Ranch abuts that area. They would have their own system, and then anything further to the south would also have to do their own improvements. So I do not believe right now there'd be a necessity for any future on there, but I will be glad to look back at that this week and, and make sure I send an email specifically on this issue, but there should not be.
Yeah, just so we're, we're kind of forecasting.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve new business, item C as read.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries.
The counsel.
Item D is discussion approval, disapproval to approve the separation agreement and general release with Mr. Ross Martin, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, Members of Council, council gave staff the authority to negotiate with Mr. Martin to authorize an additional three months to add to his six-month severance package. Mr. Martin did accept this, and we are moving forward. To note for the public, council very much believes in the town manager council former government, and we want to make sure that all potential future applicants are aware that Florence is fair and that we are trying to make sure that we treat our people correctly when they make the choice to come here. As well, the RCA also includes, that part is not voted on, Mr. Martin's contract, I'll keep on one topic, apologize, the payment for that will be $142,304.99. Potential cost of COBRA includes an additional $20,071.34. As Mr. Martin gets a job, if he gets employed earlier, then that will be less of a cost. It's, it's COBRA up to the date of employment. Next steps, the Town of Florence has entered into an agreement to be able to have an interim manager come in, and we're working with Tim Pickering, who places interim managers and interim solutions. He has more than 200 seasoned managers that are available. He's currently finding people that will be ideal for Florence. And some of the things that we've talked about will be that the person will be here for six months. It takes that much time to be able to review policies, procedures, work with the departments to make sure that we're applying our policies, procedures correct, and to look at the staff to make sure that we are experts in our area and that we are managing not only by best practices, but next practices. After councils had some time to be able to work with your interim manager, we will be requesting to go and set out a advertisement for our next town manager so that we can fill it before the end of our interim manager's six-month term. So hopefully, they would have a few, few weeks to be able to work together and understand the outs of Florence. And it is important to note to the citizens that council takes our issues that we've been having seriously and feels that a audit of our services is warranted to make sure that our citizens can have complete faith in the services that we provide. And staff all does appreciate that, and we do understand it, and we are looking forward to our interim manager coming in. As soon as I have access to those applications, we will be forwarding them on to council and setting up for interviews. Are there any questions that council might have?
Counsel, any questions or comments?
I don't have a question. I just have kind of a general, a comment. Shocker, right? So I just want to say that I think it's important that we, as a community, always stay patient and take a step back and not always listen to the beat of the street and the gossip of the street because a lot of times you're gonna find it's inaccurate, that it's half of a truth, or that in some cases, it's someone from outside of our community coming to just kind of cause turmoil. And then they sit back and watch us all spin, but they're not a part of our community, they're not invested in our community, they don't, don't own homes, they don't own businesses, they don't spend their dollars here, they just enjoy watching us spin our wheels. So I'm just gonna ask that, you know, give us time to figure out what some of our issues are within our departments, give us time to get those figured out, and understand that as council member Neil had stated last time, when we hire a town manager or a department director, we don't hire somebody with anticipation of having to train them in any aspect of government. If you, if you're experienced, your experience should show and shine in any position that we appoint you to. And so we need to ensure that our next town manager is ready for that, and the only thing they have to review is policies, and that would only be changes that the Town of Florence has made to their policies that would be different than the standard across the board through the state, and that they get to know the community. Other than that, they are expected to be able to do their job day one. And I am not a fan of anybody that needs a year to figure out how to do their job. It's not my, not my goal and not something that I'm looking for in our next town manager or any department director or any leading position within the town. So I look forward to our audit. I look forward to seeing how we can better improve some of our systems that we know we're struggling with, and maybe even just get some new creative ideas to just improve even the systems that are already working well but can always improve. With that, that's it.
Counsel member Larson?
I guess I just find, I don't know if this is the more the appropriate time, but I guess I'll go for it. I wrote out just some thoughts on the topic, and I hope that, first of all, I hope that this step is a way to show that we do care about our employees and that we do care about making, ensuring the next step to future managers, that we care about people who come to our town and invest in our town and decide to join our team. But I do want to say that over the past couple years, I would say that we, as a council, have discussed our vision for the future of Florence and our organization. We can, we put in considerable thought into the qualities, characteristics, and deliverables we desire in the town manager. We have put a lot of thought into how to create the best organization for both our citizens and our employees. So from here, I think that we want to move forward in a positive way. We want to make sure that we are doing the audit to ensure that all of our departments are working efficiently and with best practices, as Lisa said. So I'm hoping that this is a step in the right direction.
Apologize, I turned my mic off. Does anybody else have anything to add? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, new business, item D, as in David.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine is our town manager report.
We still have an extra item, Mayor?
Oh, my goodness, I apologize. I checked it beforehand. Discussions, approval, and disapproval of the programmatic agreement for the final historic property treatment plan, HPTP, for Florence Copper.
Mayor, Members of Council, this is a, hold on. This is a programmatic agreement, and the Town of Florence has been asked if we would like to consider joining. Now, the topics of this agreement is for historic properties treatment plan, the Escuante Ruins Post Imbute Ball Court site protection plan, and the summary of the NHPA-related comments as well as EPA's response that were received. Some of the issues of why this is very generic in nature is because the HPTP or the programmatic agreement is confidential, and the Town of Florence cannot share it without, with parties outside the agreement. So council has a choice to either enter into the agreement or to remain silent. But as with all agreements, if you enter into the agreement, you're party to such agreement, so you receive updates and information on what is happening. We do have three members of Florence Copper that are in the audience tonight, and they are happy to share more information if you have additional questions.
I'd like to say thank you for attending this evening, and if you have anything that you would like to add to the presentation, you're welcome to come to the podium at this time.
Confidential. My name is Sophie Dasart. I'm a resident of Florence, Arizona. I also serve as the manager of communications and public affairs for Florence Copper. I have here with me in the audience two members of our team, Michael Smotherman, our senior environmental coordinator, and John Mays, our general manager. We are glad to be here tonight to answer any questions regarding agenda item 8E.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you again for being here this evening.
Thank you. We're happy to be here.
With that, we do need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve to enter into the agreement, item new business E.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. And item nine is our town manager report.
Mayor, Members of Council, I just want to thank you for allowing me to serve as your acting town manager while you look for a interim solution. Working with the team through the last two weeks has been very, very chaotic, to say the least. We've had a lot going on, and I just wanted to let the public know that sometimes when we are dealing with an emergency, that we don't issue out information immediately. Some of the reasons is, is because the people that we need to get statements from are in the field, they're actively working on the project. So we try to keep everybody up to speed on where we're currently at and make sure that after the event is over, that we can issue out a more complete and detailed factual response. And as council is aware, you have it on your desk, we do have a press release that the team has worked on that did go out today before this meeting. I believe the mayor will be sharing it tonight. And I do just want to very much thank our team. I have asked members of the Water Wastewater to come to the next meeting, and we will be issuing a special proclamation for them. We appreciate the efforts that our team puts in, and when the water's off and there's nowhere to go, they work around the clock until that water comes back on. And I know that is an inconvenience, but it is something that they do constantly. We often talk about our police and fire and what heroes they are, and sometimes we miss out on our wastewater and water personnel as talking about how they are heroes for our community. And we're gonna bring them back to publicly thank them for all their service. And as the community knows, it's just not, one waterbank that we've been dealing with is several. And as you have aging infrastructure, they do their part to make sure that they are constantly improving the infrastructure when they do open the ground. And I just want to say that their safety is very important to us. So if you see active tape, if you see they are up working and you can see them in trenches, just remember that it's a dangerous situation for them, and to stay beyond those, those perimeters and make sure when they are working that we're not going up and communicating with them. Safety is number one, and we just want to make sure that our team remains safe. And I'm very much looking forward to Mr. Solis bringing his team at the next meeting. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a second call to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak at this time, go ahead and raise your hand or online. Come forward, ma'am.
Thank you for your time. My question is more related to the town manager's position. I'm not interested in knowing the details of what led up to the person being released. What I'm more concerned about is, so the consulting company that you have today, is this the same potential consulting company you may have used prior that brought in the former town manager? Completely different?
So what I can do, I can give direction because I can't have dialogue according to our codes, but I can give direction to our acting town manager to talk with you regarding that specific question and any other questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I would ask, ma'am? Could we please get you to state your name and address of residence, please?
Uh, why? No, I'm just kidding.
We, we ask it of all people that talk.
I'm just being, I'm being flippant. Christina Buckner, we live in Anthem, my husband and I.
Thank you so very much. Seeing no further, I'm going to close the second call to the public and call to the council for current events only. Typically, I do not start call to the council, but I have been asked to share our press release this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and share this so everybody that's here hears it, everybody online hears it, and you have firsthand information. This is press release for immediate release on October 16th, 2023, and it is entitled, "After Successful Reopening, Town Offers Thorough Recap of Work Performed at Irish Cowboy." On Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, the Pinau County Environmental Services Department approved the reopening of the Irish Cowboy, which opened for business the next day on October 12th at 11:00 a.m. The outcome could not have been accomplished without many round-the-clock efforts by our town utilities staff, public works department, and community development department. For everyone involved, thank you for your remarkable efforts and dedicated service to our community. With the Irish Cowboy now open, the town would like to provide a full account of the permit, construction, sewer connection, and repair activity that was involved with this building and the project. We appreciate our community's patience in receiving this information and apologize for any inconveniences resulting from this work. As soon as it became evident that there were issues with this building's wastewater system... As soon as it became evident that there were issues with this building's wastewater system, town staff, working in collaboration with the restaurant owners, made the prompt, safe and efficient reopening of the Irish Cowboy our top priority. While establishing wastewater services for the Irish Cowboy, questions arose about why the issue wasn't identified and resolved prior to occupancy. Several factors likely contributed to this situation involving both public and private stakeholders. In an effort to avoid preemptive fault finding, town management will coordinate a review process to evaluate any challenges and process issues encountered during this project. We will then use these insights to enhance and establish procedures and prevent similar incidences from occurring in the future. With the exception of the three areas that required permits and inspections, the Irish Cowboy's renovation of 305 North Main Street consisted primarily of cosmetic work, including but not limited to major cleaning, painting and reflooring. Below you will find an overview of this permit and construction activity as well as a summary of the sewer and plumbing work that was completed. Permit and construction recap for 305 North Main Street. Electrical, the renovation of the interior of the building did not include rewiring, upgrading of electrical service or relocation of the electrical service panel. There were some minor repairs that were completed to the electric lines on the exterior of the building. And as this activity was considered repair-related, as opposed to new construction, no permit was required. Fire-rated wall. The building code required that the tenant, the Irish Cowboy, to install a fire-rated wall and a door between the kitchen area and the public area to the restaurant. This construction work required a building permit, which was submitted to the town and approved by the building official. And after the installation of the wall and the door, a town inspection revealed that the door lacked the required fire-related public hardware. And this deficiency was noted on the amended conditional certificate of occupancy issued to the Irish Cowboy on October 3rd, 2023. And the necessary corrective action will be taken before a final certificate of occupancy is approved. The kitchen hood and fire suppression system. The new cooking appliances installed in the kitchen required a new fire suppression system to be installed, which required drawings and a permit. A permit was submitted by Metro Fire Equipment of Gilbert on August 14th, 2023 and approved by the fire marshal on August 16th. The fire suppression system, which was installed by Metro Fire, was successfully tested by Metro Fire on September 9th and observed by the fire marshal and the building official. This allowed the Irish Cowboy to safely operate their kitchen after receiving approval from the Penal County Environmental Health Services. Bathroom modifications. Prior to the renovation, the bathrooms did not meet ADA accessibility standards. The doorways were enlarged and a ramp was installed to meet ADA requirements. Since this work did not involve any new or modified plumbing or electrical service, no permit was required. However, the work was inspected by the building official to ensure ADA compliance. Roof, the town is not aware of any roof repairs completed to 305 North Main Street. Plumbing, after issuance of the Irish Cowboy's temporary certificate of occupancy on September 7th, 2023 and public opening during the weekend of September 30th, staff was notified that the building was experiencing sewer connectivity issues that necessitated the closure of the building's restrooms and temporary use of the public restrooms on 8th and Bailey. However, the continued generation of gray water within the building ultimately led to the temporary closure of the Irish Cowboy on October 5th, 2023 by the Penal County Environmental Health Services Department. To address the lack of sewer access for the Irish Cowboy, the town promptly evaluated options to provide a new sewer service tap to the Irish Cowboy and initiate a tie-in with the town sewer line on 8th Street. This emergency project, which was not funded by sewer ratepayer revenues, began on Friday, October 6th, 2023 and was completed on Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. While the town was rapidly executing the sewer interconnection project, the Florence Community Development Department notified the Irish Cowboy that they needed to find a solution to properly dispose of the gray water generated within their building. To resolve this issue, the Irish Cowboy retained a licensed plumber who obtained a permit on October 11th, 2023 to complete an emergency plumbing project. This project entailed the installation of drain pipes connecting the sinks to the rear of the building as well as the required sewer lines and cleanouts to link the building to the town sewer tap on Bailey Street. This plumbing work was coordinated with the town's building official, who conducted an inspection on Sunday, October 8th, 2023. Road closure. In order to install a sewer tap for the Irish Cowboy and operate the necessary heavy equipment, the 8th Street east of Main Street and Bailey North and South of 8th Street were closed on Thursday, October 5th. With the sewer tap now installed, Public Works staff are working on the backfill, compaction and cleanup of this area. And this area is currently scheduled to be repaved on October 27th, 2023. So unfortunately, these roads will be closed during the first Third Friday event scheduled for October 20th. In closing, the Florence Town Council and staff would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation to all of our residents and our businesses for their patience and cooperation during this process. We look forward to Main Street's continued development and success and the future restoration and revitalization of our historic landmarks, such as the Irish Cowboy Pub. Councilmember Cortez?
Sorry, I drew a blank for a second. We have several trick-or-treat trunk-or-treat events coming up. One for the town of Florence and also the school district. They are all still looking for candy donations and participants. So if you would like to decorate your vehicle and participate, it could be a side-by-side. It could be any type of motorized vehicle and participate in either one of those events, please get in contact with either the town of Florence Parks and Recs Division or also the Florence Unified School District Community Outreach Division, which is in Sandton, but they'll be holding it at each of the schools, I think. Also, Third Fridays is coming up. That's always a great thing and it's the first one of the season. So everybody is very excited to attend. And then we have our barbecue competition coming up as well. It is the beginning of our festive season. So we are going to be jam-packed with lots of things to do throughout the weekends and everything to keep our residents and our visitors occupied and celebrating. So I look forward to some great joyous celebrations on Main Street and throughout Florence altogether. And I appreciate your comments, Ms. Adams, and hopefully we can take a look at what you were talking about with the grants. And funny that you talk about parking because I think we've all been talking about that for a little bit and we have all realized the urgency. And again, we were behind on the eight ball, so we're trying to get in front of it. But yes, parking is definitely a major issue on Main Street and throughout any of our business areas. And I would encourage any of the business owners and their staff to please not park in front on Main Street, to please park on the sides and but do not interfere with any residents' driveways if you're doing so. Other than that, oh, and the last one too, is for those businesses that are on Main Street. Please remember the weight limit for your delivery trucks that are coming down Main Street. Our Main Street is fragile and cannot hold the weight of the big trucks that are trying to come down and make deliveries. Although we're excited for you to get those big deliveries, the Main Street cannot handle that weight. Other than that, that's it. I hope everybody has a great weekend.
Councilmember Maldonado?
I'd just like to personally thank Chris Solis and Public Works Team for the outstanding job that they did. Those folks find a scene that works hard and diligent and those long hours, been there, done that. So kudos to all those folks and I can't wait to personally congratulate them at the next meeting. Second of all, thank you to all those folks that came out to the Faith in Blue on October 6th, on that Friday. I think the chief counted about 100 folks that came out. So that was a really good event. I hope we can do something like that, probably at least once a quarter or something like that. But it was nice talking to all the key speakers in town and seeing that there's some room for improvement. And a lot of folks came together and talked about some of the issues and how we can try to work through them. So I think a lot is good, is going to come from it. I just hope we can have another one and have like after-action's report on some of the stuff. Next one is Make a Difference Day, Saturday, October 28th. I plan on being out there, hopefully, God willing, from 7 to 11. It's going to be at the library and then we end at the library also for lunch. So I hope that some of my fellow council members can make it also. And then finally, myself and the vice mayor were talking. Now that we have a couple of different establishments in town, on how can we assure somehow that folks are making the right decisions when they go to an establishment and maybe had one too many? So I was going to try to reach out to Uber and Lyft members in the community to try to do something like we did in the military. It was called AADD. It used to be called Airman Against Drunk Driving, but doing something similar like that. Where on the weekends, if an owner of a shop sees that someone probably had too much to drink, they can actually help that person make the right choice and call that Uber or Lyft driver for them and get them home safe. Because ultimately, we want everybody to get home safe. We want everybody to partake of all the great stuff that's going on downtown. But we want them to get home safe and want other folks on the road to be safe. So if we could just have some Uber or Lyft drivers just reach out to us and then myself or a vice mayor can reach out to some of the local businesses and see about posting some of these numbers. One life saved is all we need to make sure that this works. So I'm hoping it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
A lot of the events that I wanted to talk about have already been discussed, so we'll avoid those for redundancy. But I did want to bring up the Community Services Board meeting that occurred this last week. There was a lot of good discussion about the mural code or I guess policy and what that's going to look like moving forward, as well as the discussion on all of the CIP projects, including things like post-imbute, the rodeo grounds and just bleachers, fencing. I mean, there was just a lot of discussion about where they're at in the process. I think that that would be a really great discussion to bring back to council, just to give us an update and for the public as well. So I would like to ask that they could have that. One of the items that also was concerning to me is I know that during budget discussions, there was a dollar amount of $800,000 that we had set aside possibly for skate park, but even park improvements. We had had a discussion about what that would look like. And when we were going through the CIP project list, that was the only item that was put on hold. And when I was asked why it was on hold, it was because we were supposed to be having a work session, I guess was the direction that was received about the park down right across the street and what that would look like. And I mean, we're halfway through the year. So if we're going to expend this money in any way, shape or form by the end of the fiscal year, then we'd need to have that work session. So I would like to give that direction, if I could have a second, to get that scheduled, to get us moving on that so we can go through the process to make sure that we're doing what the council's direction was. So, thank you. And so that would be great. Otherwise, we do have a lot of great fun events that are coming up. I hope everyone is safe, to your point, and being able to get home. I wanted to thank our police officers and firefighters. I know you guys have been very busy recently, as well as the Cristalisis team. I wanted to send my appreciation as well. I look forward to celebrating them next week and all of the hard work that they've done. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
I wanted to thank those workers that worked day in, day out on a honestly embarrassing situation. Those guys, they did a heck of a job, hell of a job. They did, what, five days, four or five days, just working around the clock to fix something that should have never happened in the first place. Still a little embarrassed about that. Should have been known, should have been seen, should have been found. Great events coming up. Hope everybody can get out and take a part of it. Just thank those workers again for cleaning up other people's messes.
Vice Mayor?
The other day I was in Coolidge and seen a lot of smoke out there. Going down the street, I'd learned that there was a house on fire and I seen the Coolidge Fire Department there. And then shortly after, I seen Florence Fire Department there and the Gila River Fire Department there. So I was really impressed at the work that we do as sister cities, how we back support each other. So kudos to all the fire departments that were at that Coolidge fire. The only other thing I have is parking. Parking is a, it's kind of like a good thing and a bad thing because I'm like, we've never had to talk about parking too much because we've never had this problem. But with the new businesses, I believe that, you know, we definitely need to bring that to the forefront. If I can get a second, I would want to say that we put that on future agenda as soon as possible. Find some locations to really work on that item. That's all I have.
I only have a few items that were not already covered. I wanted to recognize our Florence Teen Council. At this past meeting, they formalized their logo for the Florence Teen Council and they put a lot of hard work effort. They met and discussed thoroughly the components that they wanted to portray. And I can't wait and I know you can't wait as well. Councilmember Cortez also serves as a liaison and Ms. Garcia and Mr. Graves, as well as Mr. Newsome participated and helped to mold our future leaders. They are planning a youth symposium that will be occurring at our community center on January 25th. So we're looking forward to bringing some opportunities for them and we will be reaching out to some of our partners to help and assist in making this a great event for our youth as well as youth around the county. We have Homecoming coming up for Florence. And if you have not had an opportunity to experience it, Main Street is full. The parade is absolutely delightful and everything comes alive. The game is exciting. So the next two weeks on Friday nights are home games. So hopefully, everybody can come out and support some local teens. As well as our Junior Prada event that is coming up. As we said, lots of events, lots of parades and activities. Please check the town website. I know staff has been working on, you know, making sure everything is up and calendared as well as sending out the brochures to everybody's home. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. To our two chiefs, you did a fantastic job this weekend. We had a small fire at the laundromat and it was quickly taken care of and we moved forward, communication was seamless and good job, both of you. With that, we have an executive session this evening, so we need a motion to
With that, we have an executive session this evening, so we need a motion to adjourn at this time.
Make a motion to adjourn their executive session?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.